Hi.
I'm good.
Commissioner Waddell on Zoom, this is an audio check, can you hear us in the room?
He looks a bit too still to not be frozen.
I think that's it.
Yeah.
He's bad. Well. Do you want it? You've got a Georgie.
Yep. Five four oh ninety three eleven.
Yep. Not sure. What was it?
Five four oh ninety three eleven.
It's not the number I have.
I know.
Hey Scott.
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, that was the home phone. No, nine seven seven.
You went out to read it out now.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll just make it an out of the public. I'm sorry for the delay, we're trying to get Zoom hooked up to get one of the commissioners that wasn't able to attend tonight. And having a few technical difficulties, but we'll be starting momentarily. Thank you. Go ahead. Dan, how are your kids doing?
Ford. Exceedingly bored.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's the reality of it. Now, we're doing an online charter school. So it's kind of homeschooling, but it's a really good teacher for both of them. It's charter school, it's not ethic, it's one of the other, okay, it's at the Gulf Re. Really, actually, they've been fantastic, the whole, the whole structure around it. Better than the.
She was terrible. She's got split classes, so she's got a certain amount of kids in her classroom. So she's standing there.
We have taken the. I really feel like that you can't do, like, it doesn't seem feasible. There are good ways to do digital learning, but it's not the same. And trying to do it the same both ways seems crazy.
See, she's the only teacher, there's five fourth grade teachers, she's the only one that has the split classes.
Yeah.
Because she's smart.
I feel like you gotta do one or the other.
I agree, but that's, this is what you don't like. So we give all these kids computers, right?
Yeah.
They're school computers.
Uh huh.
They don't have a table and don't have any chairs.
Really?
Right, I forgot, everybody thought. Yeah, I just like.
Yeah, that's perfect, see, I mean, the in public schools, digital learning platforms suck.
Test one, two, three, test.
I think we're there.
Yeah. Called a meeting to order. Before we start, I'll call for the rule.
Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Nolan. Absent. Commissioner Azelle.
Here.
Commissioner Waddell.
Here.
Yes, Mr. Stalling.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
And Mayor Pinkin.
Here. Item number two, at the commissioners', sorry. Item number two, at the commissioners' request, discuss any item of concern on the special session agenda of September fifteenth, twenty twenty. All right, seeing none, we'll move to item number three, study items. First, get a, provide a Call Lake water updates, status project status update. Chris?
Can't hear you, is your mic on?
Hello?
There you go.
There we go.
Thank you.
Yes, got a couple of things that we want to share with you. We've got a couple of, two milestones that are, where I'm really excited about in land acquisition in our NEPA. Also, I'm gonna have a member of the team who's not presented to you, present, his name is Per. He's got a long history with Corps of Engineers in construction, monitoring and contracting. So as we transition into construction, you'll be, you'll be seeing more of him. But I wanted to let you know that that was gonna happen. The agenda, we're gonna go over the status on the engineering side, on the, on the C Mar side, and then we'll close it out with a schedule. Michael?
Thanks, Chris, good evening, Commission. Hope everyone is doing fantastic today. I'll give you a quick update on the design progression, we have submitted sixty percent design for all projects. All of those were submitted on schedule on September first, twenty twenty. In the meantime, we're still having frequent daily communication with the C Mar as we progress into final design. Status of the environmental, as Mr. Biedanski pointed out, we are complete with all of the work that essentially we can do regarding the environmental assessment. The ninety eight percent is not a hundred percent because we are still in the public comment period. And we still have some agencies reviewing the NEPA document for that final approval. Which we are expecting a finding of no significant impact on November tenth of this year. And also, as Ms. Biedanski mentioned, some great news with regard to land acquisition. Ball is officially out of our court here with regards to offer packets being prepared, offer packets delivered. Very, very good percentage of accepted easements are in hand. In fact, all easement acquisition is complete for the private easements, excluding those that are required by Ridge Teams, which is currently a team. And with that, I'd like to hand it off to David for a brief update.
A brief update from the C Mar perspective, we are currently working through the sixty percent estimate with the plans and specifications provided by Garber on the first of September. So we are currently working through that process. We have completed the procurement documents for the first procurement package and submitted those procurement documents to DEQ for review. We're expecting, we're hoping to have a comment back from DEQ within the next week or so, which will keep us on track for the first procurement package to formally advertise September twenty eighth. So a quick look at the month of September, moving into October, we will be continuing the sixty percent estimate, doing some additional market research, market surveys for the items that are not being procured in an effort to support the GMP. Will be facilitating the pre-bid meetings and site visits again for that first bid package with the expectation to receive the first round of bids on the early procurement items the last week of October. I believe we have October twenty eighth or twenty ninth currently slated for that. Those items are leading into the development of the GMP, which we plan to submit during the month of November for review and approval by the Commission and others. So that's really the process that, that we're targeting and still on track for that in the month of November. Once that process is complete, we move pretty quickly towards awarding the early procurement packages, blocking some of the subcontractors and suppliers in the contract in anticipation of construction starting early next spring. Quick update where we're at and where we're headed. Some of the early procurements, I touched on it briefly. But the purpose for that is to provide more cost certainty on critical work packages, to incorporate those into the GMP. Also, to accelerate some of the work and some of the construction. Example is early procurement on pipe. Typically, it takes anywhere from three to six months for the first pipe to be manufactured. So by procuring that product early as the design finishes out, there are advantages to the construction duration and things like that, as those materials will be available as soon as we get the contractors on board. All of the procurement is compliant with the Competitive Bidding Act. And I mentioned the documents going to the state for their review and review by DEQ, which is underway, but all indications are that we're in good shape there. Again, targeted bid opening October twenty eighth, specifically the items that are being procured in this first early outbid package, there's a list of them in the presentation. But the pipeline material, so roughly seventy miles of thirty inch and thirty six inch pipe. The pipeline valves, pipeline fixtures, so these are the smaller valves and occurrences. Some of the process equipment for the water treatment plant. And then the work at the intake and pump station, including the marine work, the intake micro tunneling, and then also the larger HDBs that are a part of the raw water line. So those are the, the primary items in that first bid package.
Thank you, David. In an, in an effort to, to be extremely clear about what happens after GMP, we thought we would take just a few minutes to talk about the construction phase services. Scott's gonna help me out. Everyone hear me? Sounds a lot better, doesn't it?
Perfect.
Till it rings. So, once we get the GMP in place, we're gonna transition into the construction phase of the project. The, the construction phase is, is multiple moving pieces at the same time, all with the intent of delivering a finished project, that is what we have been conceiving this whole time, what we have been cost estimating this whole time. What the Water Board has approved, Funding Board. And, and all of these pieces work together in concert to make sure that not only are those concepts followed, but when we pull the water out of Call Lake, it ultimately ends up at the town, as intended, and it's safe drinking water. At your cost, your planned cost, and on your planned schedule. Some of these services include not just the continuation of, of the program management, but also a construction management component that the C Mar will lead. The engineering support associated during construction. There, there may be requirements for field changes and so forth that require an engineer to be involved, there may be specifications that need to be reviewed to make sure that what's getting built was what was designed, what was cost estimated, or what was in the GMP. Another critical component is the construction observation to make sure that the field crews are properly installing the equipment and the materials. System integration, system integration is the use of controls and instrumentation to monitor and, and control and automate the system from removing water from the lake to distributing it from the water treatment plant. We call that system integration, that's a construction phase component, some of that has been designed, but the actual implementation of that system integration is a construction phase component. And then finally, where the rubber meets the road, I like to call it, I don't know if any of you realize this, but I'm a former treatment plant operator. And this is where the fun really starts, and that is the last piece of that puzzle, and that's the startup phase. Making sure that this thing produces the volumes and the quality of water that we anticipated, we designed it and constructed it to do so. So, all of these, including the material testing, which I skipped over, are vitally important to ensure we get water from point A to point B. All of these are currently budgeted and, and, and in your three hundred and fifteen million dollar program cost. Two of the, there'll be three or four different contracts that you will consider moving forward, this is post-GMP. And we're gonna revisit this, you don't have to remember all this tonight, but just wanna continue to talk about it so it's not a surprise. There'll be, some of these items will be conducted by Garber in a contract amendment, some of these items will be conducted by Garni in a contract amendment. And some of these items will be conducted by others who are not represented today in the form of materials testing and quality assurance. To talk a little bit more about that construction phase item around the material testing, I wanna reintroduce to you Eric Flady, who is, will be our construction manager during the construction phase. Eric, as, as Chris mentioned, Eric brings a wealth of construction experience to this program. He has been in the deepest of weeds associated with the Call Lake program for the last three years. And he brings over thirty years of construction-related experience, including direct experience as a member of the Corps of Engineers. So with that, I wanna ask Eric to talk to us a little bit more about the material testing phase.
Thank you, Mike. Mayor, Commissioners. Michael touched on the material testing aspect as one of those holistic puzzle pieces into the.
You're gonna have to speak into the mics so that we can hear you, thank you so much.
Got it, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, Michael touched on the aspect of material testing as one of those pieces for the construction phase services. It is a very fundamental, vital aspect for construction phase, certainly to provide the assurance to the city of Enid for the investment that you are making into the Call program. You guys are, I assume, very familiar with the difference and the discussions of quality control versus quality assurance. And this graph depicts that in a simplistic format and how that will be addressed and managed through the construction phase. So, first of all, to give you the assurance that one hundred percent of the work that will be installed and conducted on this program will be tested. That is the quality control aspect. There will also be a separate component of quality assurance where we'll do a sample testing of ten percent of material. This is conducted, first of all, the, the quality control, it is that primary compliance aspect to ensure that things are being installed properly. It'll be a specific assessment of a very pointed activity of the construction effort. We'll test that work, and it finds mistakes, followed by the quality assurance piece, which again will be that random. which again will be that random approach where they'll do a holistic assessment instead of just a single item. Actually, look at the equipment that will be used to test it. Look at the certification of the welding inspector, for example. Audit that test for compliance and make sure that is to the specification required, ultimately to prevent mistakes. So this is just a brief coverage of what that material testing will look like for the entire program. To date, again, all this work will be completed by independent labs.
Okay, and now the schedule. We've got everything lined up. And if it works like it's supposed to, and we don't run into any glitches.
Can't hear you.
Still not?
You gotta get pretty close to the mic.
Okay. As you can see on the schedule, we've got our NEPA out, and it should close in time. And we're expecting approval from the Corps of Engineers. We've got our design in process. We've got the 60% in place. David is working on developing his GMP. And we're looking at everything showing up for us to present to you in the early November, December timeframe, early November timeframe, the guaranteed maximum price, and having a couple of opportunities to visit on that and and let you know what's in it, get that, get the the questions out of the way and feel comfortable with it. Once you accept it, then we can go to the Water Board for closing on the loan. Once we get that accomplished, we can, we can get the loan, close on the loan, and then we'll end up doing that contract award for construction and get racing down the road. So, everything is in place. As of now, we have a good chance of making it, I'm pretty confident. We've done a lot of work together as a team, and I really, I'm pretty excited about this one. We're getting close. Chris, did Michael say that they're gonna be here when they flip the switch, is that right? Flip the switch to turn it on? Both of them will be here when we turn this thing on. And and part of the startup is is not just put it all together and turn the switch on the wrong way. You have to, you have to set up all your processes, and that's not just in a water plant, but all the way from the lake, the intake, the valves, the pumps, booster pump, the pipeline, all of that. It's all tested independently, and then you have to test the bigger segments, and then you have to do a systems test. The most complicated part is obviously the water treatment plant, which is where we'll focus. And when we start talking about doing QA QC and construction monitoring and stuff, that's where my attention is at. You know, we have to pay attention to the pipeline, but it is a pipe. This process is water. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
Any other questions?
Chris, I've got a question for Dave, David, I think. I was talking to a contractor the other day, which is just a a regular contractor, doesn't do pipelines, anything like that. But he was telling me that because of COVID, that materials are almost double what they were just not too long ago. And I went out by Lowe's and I looked at that. They've gone off dramatically. How do you think that affects us in the scope that we're trying to do?
Yeah. It really depends on the type of construction that they're in and the materials that they use. So far in in our industry, we've seen very little impact, nominal impact from from COVID in terms of cost escalation, price escalation. Speaking of some of the things that you might see walking into the local hardware store, Lowe's, Home Depot, some of the consumer level prices are certainly going up because supply has come down, demand has gone up as people do different things. But by and large, in our industry, we've not seen a significant increase. There are a few things going on now, particularly with PVC pipe due to the cost of resins. This is a global thing that always happens. PVC, polyvinyl chloride, plastic pipe due to the cost of resins. Most of the resins in the US are imported in some way, shape, or form, and so the global dynamic has an impact on PVC pipe. It comes and goes. Right now, we are seeing a slight increase in the cost of PVC. But that's really the only the only item that we're seeing any, any cost inflation or escalation. And I'm not convinced that's directly due to COVID. I think it's other political things happening.
I wasn't trying to compare Lowe's, but
Right, right.
At the same time, it gave me a little bit of pause whenever I thought about that. I just didn't know what impact that could possibly have on us moving forward.
Certainly, there are some similarities, but like I said, across our industry, we're not seeing anything significant or substantial at this point.
Okay, good, good to hear, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
May we backtrack? I had a question on the claims list that I just couldn't find, and now I found it, and maybe Scott would be able to help us, or Gerald's here now. It was on, when the, when we had the accident out at the water treatment facility, and we paid Chauver and Son $155,000. Is that, is that kind of take care of everything out there, or where, where are we at?
That's a great question, Commissioner. Yes, $155,000, I think, was the original bid. I believe there were some additional charges for, because some conduit was burned up that was subsequently found. I believe there were some additional wiring charges. If the charge is 155 that we're seeing on the claims list, that's the original charge. I wanna say the additional charges, I I don't recall the exact amount. I tell you what, Aaron, are you out there on Zoom? If you are, can you rescue me on that question? Because she probably knows the additional amount is, but the 155 was the original amount. The additional amount was something like 15, $20,000. Okay, can you unmute, Aaron, if she's on there? Okay, Aaron, are you out there?
Yes, I'm out here. Yeah, the original contract award was 155,000. There was a change order of about 20,000 that we have not been invoiced for yet for the additional supplies that were necessary on that. And they were approved as a change order, and we just haven't been invoiced.
And I believe we're back in good shape, right, David? Okay, yes.
So, I mean, I I don't remember having a real big report on what happened out there and everything, other, you know, I mean, the basics of it. But what I never did understand was, so we have an electric backup, diesel thing out there, and it blew up, isn't that right? I mean, it went down.
Well, what happened is there was some storm damage to an electric pole. And I don't know if that was an electric strike or the wind blew the pole over, but something about electric wires crossed and it shorted everything else out. Okay. And and our generators did kick in, but we had some problems with the generators over time. And I think Scott did do an explanation, and David, maybe, do you have any updates on that? Could you fill them in better on what happened? I do know that it was a a real freak event. We're concerned about ensuring that freak events don't happen again.
Exactly.
But but David could give you a better update.
Hi, David.
Good, uh, how are you doing, sir? The the incident was essentially almost like a force majeure act of God. Lightning hit that pole and just did it right so that it looped around the entire plant and burned out all of the wiring. When we put, turned on the generators, the backups, for some reason, they were not working under load, which caused us to have to divert all the water to the old wastewater treatment plant while we got additional generators from Oklahoma City. So at this point, we are implementing some essentially preventative maintenance on those to change how we check them on a monthly basis. And that's what we're gonna do to follow up so that this doesn't happen again in the future.
Sure, so that's what I, that I, that's the end question, was that the backup? From my understanding, typically, those are tested like once a month or every couple of months or quarter or whatever. And has that been taking place, or is that what you've set up now?
It had been taking place. What the difference is, is we, you can turn on the generator and let it run, but it's similar to turning on a car. If you turn it on, but you're not turning on under the full load that it would be experiencing during that emergency and having to push all that water, then it's a different situation, kind of from a mechanical and electronics situation. So we hadn't been running it under full load, and at this point, we're gonna be implementing some changes so that when we do turn it on, it will be done under a full load situation. That may actually be done not by our staff, but possibly by a contracted company to handle that, that that does that specific activity.
Sure, well, that's what I, I had visited with other people in the, you know, that had explained that to me, that it needed to be under full load when it was tested. So if you've got that, then I'm sure we're gonna be good.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, could I ask one question also? When I was reading through this other day, I did have a question, and I forgot while we go. On the, on the consent items on 5.5, where we authorized the 20,000, $20,500 capital recovery payment to Warren Power and Machinery? Will you recap that for me while while we're doing that and exactly what that process is?
Yeah, in fact, I'm gonna call up Chris Kedansky. That has to do with an easement that we are getting for the Call Lake pipeline, I believe, but capital recovery's involved, I think.
What I'm, what item number was that, David?
5.5.
5.5, thank you.
Absolutely, sir. What had happened is there were two property owners here within the city of Enid who requested for donation of land. A, yeah, a tap to the main that goes up 81, that goes up to Warren Cat, and an installation of a water meter. It's a good trade for us, made them happy, got them off of, off of well water. That water line had been installed by Warren Cat at their cost. And so the city of Enid has a thing that we call capital recovery, which allows a developer to develop capacity in excess of what he needs. And then he gets a a share of the hookup cost based on, in water, based on the meter size and the amount of land that's being serviced by that meter. And so that's a pro rata share of that investment cost. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Thank you, thanks, Chris. All right. Study item number two, discuss Ward Three cleanup. Gerald, you wanna start us off?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about cleanup. I'm gonna have Tim Stevens, our solid waste supervisor, come up. He's got a slideshow that you guys have that we'll pull up. And he has developed a great plan to pick up with the ward by ward cleanup, starting with Ward Three. And so, Tim, if you go through the plan, then we'd love to see what you think and then get started.
How you doing? All right, so the the plan that we have, there we go. We'll be sending the grapple trucks through a selected ward every Monday for a designated month. So basically, we'll select a ward for, let's say, October. And every Monday, we'll have the grapple trucks go through and clearing, clear out the the piles. This will give the residents four opportunities to take advantage throughout the month, or they can use all four, you know. It also, with this kind of system in place, it'll prevent trash from piling up and staying for long periods of time. So it'll actually be cleaned up once a week.
Are we going to do separate bulk trash and bulk land pickup?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll touch on that. We'll do it at the same time. We'll just, we're, we're gonna kind of ask them to, if they can, to separate it. So the timeline we're looking at, we can start back up with Ward Three in October, Ward Four in November. The idea was to kind of take a break, December, January, those are kind of the unpleasant months. We don't want people to deter from it. And start back up in February with Ward Five, Ward Six, and Ward One in March and April. So there's kind of an idea as far as like the schedule. So Ward Three, if we started in October, they'd have the sixth, the 12th, the 19th, and the 26th. The convenient part about this is usually when we do pickups, it's hard to schedule anything with solid waste. We actually have the set dates now. So it'll be kind of a set in stone thing for, so residents know, there's no questions. Same thing, November would be the second, ninth, 16th, and 23rd. One of the advantages of picking up on Monday is, the major one is, we have all week to get it picked up. So if I go through, you know, a certain neighborhood and four or five piles get left, I've got Tuesday to go back. So the guidelines that we're gonna ask, do not mix trash and brush, stack trash in brush in separate piles. That way, we can kind of keep it separated out, you know, if it's possible. Place trash at the front of the house, 10 feet within the curb. Do not place trash under any hanging or low hanging trees or power lines, and ensure that there is 10 feet of clearance from any objects such as basketball goals, mailboxes, water meters, sprinklers, cars, et cetera. That's pretty much the presentation. It's pretty cut and dry, simple, you know. I like simple because it's simple for everybody that way. And so, if you've got any questions.
Okay, you had like four different Mondays in the month that you're gonna be doing a certain ward.
Yes, sir.
Are you making zones within that ward, or is it anybody that calls in from Ward One is gonna be picked up during one of those four days?
So we'll select a ward for that month, like I said, like Ward Three. We'll select Ward Three, and we're gonna run Ward Three every Monday.
Okay, but you're not trying to go from one end of the ward to the other?
We'll cover the whole thing. We kind of experimented with this last year when we first talked about it, and it worked out really well. We we didn't have a problem keeping up with that and having the rest of the week to service the rest of the city as well. Because that's the trick, is trying to keep them both happy.
Right.
You've got a route, you can cover the whole, you've got a route, you can cover the whole ward in a day, and.
We'll send two trucks into the ward. And we went through, we kind of, like I said, last year, we experimented with Ward Two, Three, Four, and it worked beautifully. So last year, we kind of experimented with Ward Two in Octo, in August. We went through Three in September and Four in October, and it worked flawlessly. We first tried like roll-offs. That became a big safety issue, and they were getting overflowed, and we, we haven't sent grapple trucks out anyways. So then we were like, hey, let's just let the grapple trucks run it on Mondays. Mondays is great because we don't have the residential trucks in in those congested areas. There's a lot of advantages to doing it that way, so. And then also, if we ever did get to where it was a heavy day, we did have Tuesday to go back and clean stuff up.
Okay, so just out of curiosity, on your calendar that you showed, why would you not do like on the first Monday, do Ward, if you start with Two, then the next Monday, Three, next Monday, Four? Otherwise, it's four months before some of these wards get picked up.
So when we first talked about it, it was trying to, you run into trying to make, we wanted to give everybody an opportunity to be able to do it. Like, so if we did it, let's say we did Ward Three on October 6th. It's never gonna fail. Someone's not gonna be able to take advantage of that day. Does that make sense? Like, they'll be, something will come up, and they're not gonna be able to get their stuff cleaned out. And also to add on to, you know, what Gerald was saying, this, this isn't something, this is big. Like, this is like, we want you to clean your stuff out. Like, this is your opportunity to like, you know, get it out, get as much as you can out, you know. We gotta come back four times, we're gonna come back four times and get it all out, you know, and 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 so, like, it's like Gerald was saying, if you mean a simple little pickup, we can come back anytime and get that, you know, but.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next, item 3.3, discuss homeless issue in Bree's Way downtown. Gerald, you wanna start us off?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start off. We've got a slideshow, I'll kind of go through that. I I know Main Street's here, I represent it by the board.
I, I, I know Main Street's here, I represent it by the board and their director, so I'd like them to say a few words. And then I know that, uh, you guys have some thoughts and ideas and I think there's some other people. I appreciate some nonprofits here and some folks to talk about the issue. Uh, the, the issue is the Breeze Way was created several years ago. It is a nice place, um, for people, um, to use or to walk through or to cut through. Over time, there have been some issues that have arisen from misbehavior, I guess I'll say, of, um, um, people that are homeless or experiencing homelessness that may, and it's not, it's not everybody. It's, 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 it's always a few that ruin it sort of for everybody. But those issues have really, um, I guess grown in the last few weeks. Again, not to discount that they haven't been there for a while. And so I've got the, let me go through the slideshow here. Uh, some of the issues, uh, again, and I think you guys have seen some emails with some pictures and we've got some of the pictures here, but you know, food remnants, okay, not, not a huge deal. I mean, that happens in the parks too, but, um, trash, remnants, uh, safety issues. I know we've had some complaints, um, about threatening behavior, um, peeing in the bushes, um, drug use, those kinds of things. Um, potential resolutions that we're going to talk about tonight, uh, obviously there have been some volunteer groups, including Main Street that, that helps in that area. Uh, the city's making an effort to step up our areas to, or, or our efforts to, um, empty the trash and clean the areas as needed. We have talked potentially about some barriers, but that's really a last resort because the downside of a barrier is it prevents everybody from using it. And that's not really the intent of the area. Uh, however, the problem has grown to such a level that a lot of ideas are being considered. Enforcement is, can work when there's a criminal complaint, but it, it can't really solve or, or make the situation better. It responds to a problem when it happens. And then we talked about potentially trying to find, uh, a way to meet the needs of the homeless population maybe better than we're doing now. Uh, let's see, I've got, uh, some objectives. And I know I've gotten some of these, uh, Commissioner Zell, I think, from you, and I think they really fit. Kind of what we're trying to do to improve the situation down there. Um, one of the objectives, provide resources to limit COVID spread. Obviously that's something important to all of us. We've talked about police calls, police can come down there, but largely they're not equipped, or they're not equipped really at all to, 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 to try and work on the underlying needs or causes. Uh, mental health issues and substance abuse issues are a big part of it. And food insecurity issues, um, training and resources and, and a work program, not that, if there is anybody that, that is wanting to work in that population, we have lots of jobs, um, at the city of Enid, entry level jobs that perhaps they could help us with, or we could partner with an agency and have some kind of program that might help. Uh, these are some pictures I think you've seen. Um, I went down there today. It wasn't quite like this, but there was, of course, lots of cigarette butts. Again, similar to what I've seen in the park, but, but it still makes it unattractive and causes somebody to have to go and do something and clean some stuff up. Here's some pictures of some trash. And so that, so you get the idea of that. We've already talked about safety and disorderly conduct. I think Main Street, some of the businesses that may be here, or Main Street on their behalf can talk about some of the more specific problems. I wanted to point out, I really appreciate Main Street's, um, help, uh, and support to try and find, um, a win-win solution here, I guess I'll say. But clearly something needs to be done to improve the Breeze Way fairly immediately. Um, Main Street's partnering with the city to help on that. I, I'm sure there's others, uh, in, in the city that can and will. And obviously working on meeting the needs of the homeless. And maybe even, I know Main Street has been over there and some of the homeless, I think, Natalie, you can speak to it, may have, may have helped you because again, it's, it's like anything else, it's not everybody. It's a few people that misbehave and cause issues. Um, Enid Faithways Church and James Neal had gotten involved with a youth group. Uh, this has been probably two weeks ago or so. Uh, you can see some pictures of some cleanup efforts they made down there. And I guess that's, that's pretty much it. So that kind of brings us to where we're at. Um, Mayor, I'd like, uh, if Main Street would like to say a few words? And then I know that, um, certainly we probably need to have some healthy dialogue and figure out how to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Well, hello everyone. Um, I am the Main Street Enid Director and I'm here today to express my concerns for our, um, for the welfare and safety of our businesses and our citizens of Enid, um, in the downtown area. Um, so from the time that I took over, um, as Director for Main Street Enid, this has been an issue. Um, I know this has been an issue well before I got here, probably at least three years now. Um, and it just continues to get worse. And so I think we're at a point that we need to find a solution, uh, so the community can really feel safe again. Um, so some concerning behavior that has been brought to my attention over the last few months, um, in and around the Breeze Way is verbal harassment. We have a lot of that, uh, violence, intoxication, drug use, urination and defecation inside the Breeze Way, indecency, and even sexual acts, which is not really acceptable. So, uh, while not all patrons of the Breeze Way, um, have ill intentions, we should treat all concerns with validation. Um, so I do believe these people need help, um, but the fact that the Breeze Way is located in a largely high traffic area with lots of people and lots of businesses, um, that is an issue that really, um, hurts, hurts the case. So, um, leading them to get more agitated within these high traffic areas. So, um, business owners and community members, customers, and even myself have, um, been victim to these harassments. I've been catcalled many times. Um, I even while taking Vance houses, uh, on tours of, of downtown, the evolving catcalled. Um, food has been thrown at me. I've been yelled at for just walking by the Breeze Way. And I know, um, many others have had that issue as well. So on September 2nd, um, I was brought, I, I was informed that the Breeze Way had been trashed out with food and all kinds of other things. So I decided to go clean it up. Um, it needed to be done. And when I got there, there was cheese and all kinds of other stuff, uh, thrown all around the, the area. So while cleaning up, I did, um, I did talk to the folks that were in the, um, the, the Breeze Way and I was able to get a little bit of information. And so that being said, um, I was told that there are people coming from out of town because they have heard about the Breeze Way and they can kind of do whatever they want. Uh, so they are kind of stirring up trouble to those who are peaceful, uh, which is really unfortunate because some of those people just want to hang out and, um, you know, not be harassed. Uh, and they are, there's a lot of drug use involved in this. So after speaking with the folks in the Breeze Way, I did make my way around the block of the Randolph Block and I talked with, um, a lot of the business owners to kind of get their stories. And I have a, a few of them here today to speak as well because they can tell you their stories better than I can. But some of the behavior I was told about was continuous fights breaking out, uh, folks pounding on the back door of their shops, asking, trying to get in, uh, following customers into the shop, into the shops and harassing them, asking them for money or water or whatever. Um, and even loss of business, uh, because due to customers being scared to be in the area. So, um, and that's just a few things. So that is, uh, my experience, but I do have Don Muncie here, uh, with Muncie Photography, Stacy Gober with the Bridal Shop, and I believe Ryan Jackson is here with, um, uh, Jackson's Jeweler. So if, um, Don, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Hello, thank you for granting me an audience today. Oh, that better? Okay, thank you. I've, uh, I own Muncie Photography. I've been in that building now for 17 years. And I think the, the problems that we've seen started, I would say around six or so years ago. I think that's the first bad incident that I experienced. Numerous, I, I, I used to shoot near the Breeze Way a lot. It's a beautiful area, but I can't do that now because especially senior girls, it's just, it's brutal. They're, they're constantly catcalled and the, the, the language is foul and it's embarrassing, truly. And also just with the trash, it's almost impossible to use the space now because even though there are four very large trash cans in the area, they aren't used. Um, I think probably the scariest situations are when we've, you know, had direct contact with, uh, some of the people misusing the space. Um, I sent you guys all an email. I hope you received that. I don't, I don't know that you need me to go into that language again. I think you, you know, understand how viciously verbally attacked we were. And then of course I had a, a client that works over in the Triangle Building specifically asked me if she could come to my back door because she's too afraid to walk down that area. So, um, I don't, I, I mean, if you guys would like more information, I'm happy to, to give you a, a very long list of, uh, experiences that I've had. But I just want to say that as a business owner, um, it, it, this issue is escalating and this behavior is causing loss of business or at least making the area less attractive for people to spend more time walking all the way up. I mean, that's what we want them to do is shop all the way around the square. So, um, I'm happy to answer any question.
I have a, I have a question. Well, a statement maybe. Um, I know there's some more of you going to talk and Don, I, I read your email and it was compelling. I didn't realize what was going on until the last few weeks. I would really like you guys to throw some ideas out because we really need to figure out what we need to do. So if individually, when you come up there, if you've got an idea, I'd like to hear it while you're telling us the, the bad things too.
Sure, yes. Um, I, as Natalie stated earlier, it's not everyone causing the problem. Some of them have even asked local, some of the businesses on either side for a broom, like to actually clean up the space. So some of them do care. Uh, what I, what I personally see a lot of is them using the water and the power in, in the back of the Breeze Way. And even if that, even if the space were to be gated, that would still be available. So that doesn't solve an issue. I'm, I'm not a big fan of the gate idea. I think, I think we don't need to do that yet. I'd like to see what else we could do. Personally, I think removing the picnic tables and putting locks on the power and the water so that they, so that that is available for use by downtown as it was intended, but not being used as it's not intended.
But then who gets a right to use it then? Why, why should you be able to use it and they shouldn't?
I'm not using the power or the water in that area.
Right, but if it, if it's, if it's locked, the idea being that the access for only the people who are supposed to use it, who's supposed to use it? I mean, it seems like they're-
Downtown, I think, I, I-
But they're downtown users.
I'm sorry, let me be more specific. Um, I believe that the bands that perform in the Breeze Way use the power. Um, and I know that they're, and I'm, and the water is used by the city when they're spraying off, cleaning up, um, for those events. So, I mean, it's my understanding that, that, that power and water is available, you know, for the city use, not necessarily for individual, individuals or citizens.
I'm not sure if that's the case or not. I know, you know, when I go to Government Springs Park, there are power outlets, there's hose bib. I mean, I've been drinking from that hose bib at Government Springs Park since I was a kid. It's kind of a public space. I, my, my hesitance, and why I bring it up is, listen, these folks are, they're downtown users too. And they have just as much right to be using public space in downtown as you do or I do.
Absolutely.
And, and removing amenities and, and limiting, limiting access to these really scarce resources for these folks. There aren't many places you can charge your cell phone or, or use a hose. I'm, I'm hesitant to, to lean in that direction. What, what else do you think we can do to, to maybe improve the caliber of the interaction? What, what can we do to bring them into the community more?
I, I guess I have a question before I answer that. What, um, who, who is, who is supposed to be able to use the power and the water there? Like, why was it put there in the first place?
And I think it's kind of the same answer as a park, right?
I don't know if it was, I don't recall if it was all put there at the same time, but over time it was really added to support, I believe, First Friday type events, use of the Breeze Way. Not necessarily individual use. I don't, I can't tell you how many outlets are in there. I do know I've noticed some outlets at the, at the backside. I think a couple of solutions that the city, that I would propose, that the city would work on with, um, not only with the, the local businesses in Main Street, but also with the organizations that help with, with the homeless situation would be to, um, first and foremost, look to see what, what those needs are that are, are, are used by the homeless population and see if we can provide for that, maybe in a, a different setting or, 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 I don't know, that's where I'll reach out for the, the local organizations like Our Daily Bread, Salvation Army, Enid Faithways, uh, people like that to help me with that. Um, the other, um, thing that I think that we could do and be proactive on is probably what Don talked about with electricity and, uh, water maybe, because those really aren't, from my perspective at the city, those aren't really there necessarily for individual use.
Why not? Because they certainly are at all the other public parks. If I go to any of the city parks, there is no limitation on any one of those parks to plug in my cell phone or use the hose, hose bib to fill up a water bottle. And, and that's been the case my entire life here. Why is this different?
Uh, well, one thing that comes to mind that, that, that could be different, uh, that we do not do in the Breeze Way is, um, when people go to a park and, and sometimes they'll rent the pavilions. If you rent a pavilion, they're clearly there for that use, but you don't have to rent a pavilion to go into the park and use it. You're right. And so, uh, uh, but a park setting, um, is a little different than this setting, at least from, from my perspective. Uh, this is really an area that used to be a burned out building. And so to make it something productive, it was determined, it was torn down. And then over time, it was determined that we could put a new brick facade on the inside, make it look more attractive, put some metal on it and have it as a, a sort of an event area, but also as a walkthrough or a cut through downtown. That's the way I perceive it.
I think your distinction between that and a, and a park is a little bit of distinction without a difference. I want to hear from the rest of the business owners, but before we do that, let me talk a little bit about, just so everyone else is aware, generally, I mean, this is a, there's a broader issue. There is a broader issue. We, we have inadequate support structure in our community for, um, for both the homeless population and people suffering mental illness. And it's, there's an opportunity before us as we have access to a new kind of chunk of funding through the CARES Act, which is trying to get money down into communities. And one of the, the priorities for the CARES Act funding is, is obviously addressing, um, spread of COVID-19. But more generally, we can use some of that money and, and use some of our other city resources to get somebody hired by the city of Enid, uh, to address these issues, who actually has the skillset and qualifications to do it. Because social work is its own thing. You know, a social work, uh, degree is not, you know, it's not a thing of, without substance. There are people who are qualified to deal with this. And we're all stumbling around a little bit because it, it's not, we, we lack the skillset at the city of Enid. We lack the skillset at Main Street. We lack the skillset at the Enid Police Department. And so we need some help. Instead of limiting amenities and trying to run people off, it seems like this is an opportunity to try to help, you know, citizens of Enid. Because these folks are citizens of Enid just as much as any of us are. And so I think there's an opportunity to find someone qualified, to get them hired and to charge them with, with, I think broadly, I'd like to see, and I know I've talked to some of the other commission about this and talked to Gerald about this quite a bit and talked to some of the other social service agencies in town about this quite a bit. But broadly, three mandates. First, for the short term, um, there's a high incidence of, of COVID-19 among homeless population nationally. It's a serious issue because people don't have access to sanitation services. So let's get somebody and make that part of their mission to connect the homeless population that we have with the resources they need to be safe. Because we don't want people getting sick in our community. Second, more generally, when somebody has an issue, when Dawn has an issue with a homeless person in the Breeze Way, with a person who's acting, um, unusual in the Breeze Way, when anybody in the Breeze Way, and you don't really have anybody to call. I mean, you can call the Enid Police Department, but really their limitation is, okay, are you violating an ordinance? Yes, all right, we can cite you. But they're not equipped to deal with the, the actual underlying issue. And so if we had a social worker on city staff, when there's a 911 call with, uh, that kind of falls under two general rubrics, either homelessness or mental health in general, a mental health incident, we'll have somebody who, when you call the Enid Police Department or you call 911 or you call City Hall, we have somebody who, who can actually help, who has the skillset and the training to help. And, and that may be, um, connecting the homeless population, the community with resources. It may also be someone with the mental health training to be able to identify someone in a crisis and connect them with the resources to provide help. We don't have that in our community and they do in lots of other communities. And this isn't recreating the wheel. This is dedicating the funding to actually hire a qualified social worker. Um, I talked to Gerald about bringing this on a future city council agenda, uh, as a budget amendment so we can adequately fund it. I think we need to take it seriously and, and fund it appropriately. I think we need to take it seriously and, and fund it appropriately. And I think if we are, instead of limiting the resources in a public space, if we're instead trying to identify the community in need and help them instead of taking things away, I think we not only do a better job of addressing the problem we actually have, but I think we're also doing a better job for the community as a whole. And so I'm interested in hearing what everybody else has, but, but keep in mind that there, that's an option. And maybe it's not the answer, maybe it doesn't do anything. But it seems like it's the more humane way to try to address the problem than just, let's take away their picnic tables. That, that seems needlessly unkind.
On the other side, I believe that what Ben said about hiring, looking into hiring somebody to help in that, on the mental health issues, probably not a bad idea. That doesn't help us tomorrow. What we need to do now is shut off the electricity, shut off the water, and then we need to install cameras down there to monitor what's going on. My comments don't need, and I appreciate you understanding what I'm saying or maybe agreeing or disagreeing, but we have to take issue with this immediately. And part of that, it's, it's a few bad apples. It's not a bunch of people. I don't believe. I believe that you have a few people that are taking advantage of a situation that we have. We have a lot of resources in this community that are in, within walking distance of Our Daily Bread. And that's where the problem starts, is there. Our Daily Bread does a fabulous job of taking care of our community homeless and the people that need assistance. And there are, within walking distance of that, there are numerous organizations that allow people to come in and use these resources. What the problem is, is the people that are creating the problems are being asked to leave those places that are there to help them. So they wind up at the breezeway. If we, I hate the idea of putting a gate on it, but we're coming into winter time. And if we shut the thing down for a little bit, a lot of that will go away. And then we can start fresh in the spring. But I say turn off the electricity, turn off the water, start monitoring with cameras that we can go and look at. I don't know if we put a monitor in Main Street or what we do. But, and then we can give, that allows us to have time to look into hiring more people that can help us with mental health issues, because there's no question that that has a place.
Thanks Commissioner Allen. I'd like to, I, I think a lot of us want to say some more, but I really want to hear from some of the other people, from the public that are here today. Because they may not be able to come to every, every commission meeting, but they are here today. So I'd like to use the rest of our time to hear from them and see what their thoughts are.
Stacy, do you want to come up and talk?
Hi, I'm Stacy Gober. I have The Bridal Shop. And I've had my shop now, it's going on 21 years. And I love downtown. When we had to leave our original building on the other side of Randolph and move down to where we are now, I was excited about the breezeway being put in. My brides absolutely love to go down there and take pictures. Last Friday, I had a girl, bless her heart, she, we had her in her dress, went outside in her gown and some man walked up to us and asked her for money in her wedding dress. And I just, oh, it's personal. I took it personal. So if nothing else, we have got to fix the situation. And I'm super passionate about fixing it quick because it's daily. I walked down today, two women were arguing, one pushed another lady. And I agree, it's not everyone in our town. I just think we need a quick fix now. And then if we want to hire somebody to take care of our social service, I am all for that. I donate my time to help these people. So I'm all for helping our homeless. I don't think that is our issue. But we have to shut something down immediately to fix it because it's, it's daily that it's a problem. I mean, Natalie put up some cameras, so she's been monitoring the situation. So I think, you know, if you need daily video, I'll promise you 100%, we can pump it to you every single day. And when our poor police department, I have called twice because they've been fighting one time so bad, I thought the guy was going to be, I thought he was going to, you know, not make it. It was a bad situation. I don't think that's fair to our police department. I think it's, they've got other things to do than to care for our homeless. So I just feel like I, I'm 100% with you, Ben. Oh, we got to fix something. Long-term, I think that is a problem, but if we can cut the power to the poor people, I'm even willing to, hey, if you're, the homeless people are coming in asking for water and Band-Aids, we're providing that. So it's not like we're kicking them out of our stores. If they need to come in and plug in and they are, like Natalie said, if they are people that want to help our community, then 100%, they can come sit in my back room and plug in if they need to recharge their phone. I don't have a problem with most of them. It's the few people that we do have a problem with. And I know this has been zoned as a park and I have absolutely so not in my world to know if we can rezone it even. I don't know. But I just think there needs to be, we don't have long-term to hire somebody whenever we have daily people coming in being catcalled and it's just, it's dirty down there. Every day there's trash. And I've started walking through there picking up trash myself. Because when she showed me those pictures that were down there with the cheese, we're talking cheese on the walls, cheese on the floor, cheese on the tables, much less they're using the restroom in those bushes. And we don't want to get rid of the bushes because the bushes are pretty for downtown. So, you know, and obviously none of us want a gate because it's beautiful. My brides want to go down there and take pictures. But right now, I, after Friday, I will not send anybody to that area. So that's it. Thank you.
A, a couple of quick corrections. The, the cheese thing, just heads up, that was, we got a lot of feedback on that. It was one isolated incident where somebody went down to feed a bunch of folks and they didn't take the leftovers with them. And one person who is clearly not particularly stable took it upon themselves to fling everything everywhere. And that was a really unfortunate situation. And immediately following, being made aware of it, some of the volunteers went down there and tried to clean it up. It was, it was, the cheese thing was nicely. But more generally, I, I don't, and, and Jerry, I really want to push back against the idea that providing social service is somehow some long-term impossible thing to do in a short term. We can, there are resources and, and there's nobody there to help. And you're right, the, the police aren't equipped to do with it. We don't have anybody equipped to deal with it. But I don't think it has to be like a, we don't have to wait till next budget cycle to do it. We've got access to some great funding on a short-term matter. Let's find somebody and let's try something. But, but, and, and so I, I don't, I'm, I'm just hesitant to, anytime we're taking away resources from a large populace because a couple of people are being jerks, just as a, I, I got a problem with that, especially if we can try something else. And so maybe that's the only option is to just shutting things off. But there are just so few places within that walking distance proximity. Boy, I mean, everyone has a right to use the public space and I, I want to help. I want to make a difference, but I don't, I, I, I just don't think it's a long-term, that finding, that providing help isn't necessarily a long-term solution. That we can do that in the short term, I think. It's at least worth a shot.
I mean, I agree. I am not-
And thank you for, for helping the folks that are, I really do appreciate that you're, you're being kind.
And I really think a lot of businesses downtown, we're not all about kicking them to the curb. I mean, that's not our intention. Our intention is to make that be a great place for downtown. I mean, our logo downtown is shop, dine and be entertained. We want that for our downtown. We all have options. We can all leave downtown. We don't have to keep our businesses down there. With that being said, if I have another incident like that on Friday, oh my gosh. I mean, I was beyond upset and I felt so sorry for my bride and it was a terrible situation. And all I could do was apologize. I mean, what else do I do? And then after she leaves, I go down to the breezeway and pick up trash. Well, that's fine. I mean, I own a business. I have two children. I have, I mean, everyone's busy. So just asking businesses to come down and clean up the breezeway, we all can, but I'm not sure that's-
The city should do that. The, the city should keep it clean.
Each time Ben gets to speak, I get to make a response. And the response is, is that is not a park, it is a breezeway. It was not, I was on the city commission when we tore that mattress factory down and turned it into a breezeway. Then 20 years or five years ago or so, they redid it into something really nice into what it is now. And it has, it is not a park. It is for functions. And it's being used for a function that it's not designed for. And so we have to address that.
Okay, we're getting pretty close on time. Mr. Burke, would you like to speak? And you'll probably be our last speaker for-
It's John. No, Mr. Burke, it's John. I just want to make a comment or two. Our parking lot is the runway from Salvation Army to the breezeway and then on to the church to be fed. Our parking lot is covered with trash every morning. Our employees pick it up, clean it up. We've had people urinate, defecate in front of our building, on the sidewalks. It's not just the breezeway folks, it's that whole area. And we've been down there for eight years. This is the first year we've really had a problem. And they're not locals. A lot of those folks we recognize, they've been there for eight years. The ones we're having trouble with are new. They're not from Enid. I don't know if they're homeless, how they afford to get to Enid, but we need to figure that out. Agreed. I'm not against helping people. I give them breakfast almost every other morning. But we can't have my employees and my tenants' employees harassed as they go to and from their cars every night, every morning, asking for money. And some of them are afraid to go to their cars without someone walking with them. And that's unfortunate. Enid's too good for this. And we just need to clean it up and clean it up now before it gets out of hand even more. Somebody's going to get severely hurt. And then we can work out trying to help them, but most of the folks we're having trouble with aren't from Enid, Ben. They're from out of town. How'd they get here? Why are they here?
But if they come to Enid-
How'd they get here if they don't have any money?
Totally fair question, but also there's not a minimum residency requirement to become a citizen of Enid. You can move here and be at Enid's home.
Yeah, you don't have to pay taxes. You don't have to do anything. Just show up.
That's right.
But it's unfair for those that do.
Correct.
All right? All right.
But one, one brief correction, Jerry. The Main Street Enid website calls that the Breezeway Pocket Park. So I, I think it is a park and Natalie's website says so.
I don't believe that that would be Main Street's idea and they put that on that. That was not designed as a park.
In partnership with the city-
If we got it listed as a park, then we need to, then we need to-
Can I make a quick comment? Just real quick, if, it, it sounds like it's at the very least a public space. It's a public space that's been given seating arrangements for somebody to use without any type of registration that's required or permission to do it. So it sounds like it's a public space designed for public, for, for people from this community or outside of the community, quite frankly, to come and to congregate. And so if that's the case, I, I'm, I'm not sure how we get to dictate who, who gets to be there and who doesn't get to be there.
I think we say, whenever they're disruptive and they're hurting our businesses downtown, they don't have the right to be there then, Jonathan.
I think you're, I think you're 100% correct. I think you're 100% correct as an individual.
And they not, don't get out.
Correct as an individual, when an individual breaks the law.
They were going to be in certain public places.
David, what you're talking about specifically is when an individual violates the law or becomes a public nuisance or something of that nature, then they become removed. They, they're, they, you can remove them based on the fact that they violated the law. But what you don't get to do is do a sweeping, a, a, a sweeping initiative to remove an entire class of people because of the actions of, of an, of an individual or two individuals.
To extend your metaphor, David, if you are disruptive, the ballpark, you are removed. They don't shut down the ballpark.
No, but we put restrictions on everybody because of COVID, even though they weren't sick. We didn't have a problem doing that.
You really want to go down that road?
Too. Yeah, the ballpark's got a gate on it. So, I mean, I'm all for finding out how we can solve that.
I think you're, I actually think you're right. Let's just go ahead and put a gate up. Let's do that. Let's put a gate up.
Hey, we have violence that's going on right down next to our businesses. So I, I think we've, I'm with Jerry on this. I think we've got to shut it up for a while. And then let's, let's put a group together and figure out, I mean, have we ever looked at how many homeless we have here?
Yes, there's organizations that done, that, that do that. I was going to suggest that, that what your city is going to do for you is have a meeting later this week with the organizations that know. You're exactly right, Commissioners Allen. We don't know and aren't equipped to solve this problem or help with this problem. But there are agencies in town. There's, there's various, various ones. Our Daily Bread, Salvation Army, Forgotten Ministries, Enid Faithways, CDSA, Main Street, et cetera. So I, my effort is going to be to work with Main Street and those agencies, United Way too, Dan Shidell, later this week and come back with a list of short, intermediate and long-range objectives, short-range things that we can do immediately based on community input and, and their solutions. They will help us solve that. And, and you're right, there's lots of CARES money. We have, we are not limited by money. We do have funds. I do want to look at the option to, before we jump out and hire somebody, because as you pointed out, we're not qualified. We don't have anybody, so we have to find somebody. I think there might be an agency that might be qualified to help and do a similar thing and fund it through the city, which is what I hear you saying. But, but, but my, my effort is to jump out there and have that meeting later this week. Commissioner Stone, you want to say something? I'm going to be quiet.
I, I'm, well, I can wait till you're done, Mr. Shidman. All, all I wanted to say is we, we've heard from three people that specifically told us that their business is being disrupted to death. You know, if, if you spend time working with these other agencies to come up with a plan, I think that's a grand idea. But that's not helping these people tomorrow. And we need to figure out how we can help them quickly for the short term and then work on the big, the big problem.
Why, why do those businesses get the short-term help and not the homeless people who don't have anywhere to go, Rob? I mean, let's prioritize.
Ben, we're not, we're not going to get into this esoteric discussion about that. We, we don't agree on a lot of things, okay?
No kidding.
We're probably not going to agree on this. But I agree with these people that we need to get this thing cleaned up and reduce the disruption to their business.
And, and Gerald, to be clear, I am not saying we just fund something through an agency. If we have an agency that has capacity, that's great. But I want a short answer on if there's an agency who's willing to take that on. And if not, there are people that can be hired. They are called social workers. This is not unique. And they're employed by municipalities all over the country. So if we need to hire a social worker to do a social worker's job-
Mayor, can we take a break before the meeting? Yep. We've got, it's 22 after, so let's take, we'll get back here at 6:35, give everybody a chance to take a break. Thank you.